Here.
We have one item on the agenda tonight. Excuse me. It's a sketch plan, conceptual and development plan, proposed addition for the Hereford Mr. Storage LLC, 1305 Lawrence Road, 850 Eagle Road. And we have two go. You all have a copy of the letter from our township engineer.
Yes.
And we'd like to you to go over that with us this evening?
Yes, happy to do that. Let me just, an introduction.
Say your name.
My name is Louis Gilmore. I'm one of the owners of the project that in question here. So, just so you understand, I guess it's, our project's been very successful. Obviously, a need for self-storage in this area because we are basically 100% full, turning people away. So, we feel that in order to satisfy this demand, and there is quite a good demand because we ran it up very quickly, we would like to put an addition on the back of the building. Be connected to the other existing building. It would be on the property that's owned by Mike Mardenley now. We would put the two, annex the two together, and it would be exactly the same type of building, the same height, same type of structural building that the front building is. And one thing, just so you know, that Eagle Road coming down here, you'll not be able to see this building at all. A glimpse of it would be over 10 yards away. Basically, the building is the same height as the front building, so it's completely hidden. Unfortunately, but unfortunately for us, this line represents the cap that exists from the EPA. So, we built the first building on the cap, we're building the second building on the cap. I've had discussions with the EPA, was one of Chuck's points, but I've had discussions with them, and they are in favor of the project, but I have to give them your recommendations and get all this data together and send it to them, and they'll review it, and we'll get a letter for them. But they're not opposed in any way to this. So, I would like to hand out one thing in advance, and that is, we are going to the, hopefully, if we can get your approval of this project, I know it's a sketch plan meeting, but your ideas, we put them together, we're going to the zoning board. And our attorney has prepared a list of the zoning variances. Now, almost all of this information that we're going to be going to the zoning board with is the same as what Chuck came up with in his letter. There may be one item that's different, but I think if you were, if I can put this in and pass it out, just so you have that, the things that Chuck referred to, impervious surface, steep slope, those variances that we did receive the first time we came before you, received approval on, those are the same variances, basically, that we're going to be requesting before the zoning commission. So, I think that you're right, the easiest way to do this, Mr. Russo, would be to go down Chuck's letter, and Jamie, I'll introduce Jamie McComby as our engineer, I think you all know Jamie from being here for years, and let him, he can answer some of the questions, I'll answer some of the questions as we go down Chuck's letter. So, if that's the way you'd like to do it?
Yes.
We can start.
Yes, my name's James McComby, I'm the engineer for the applicant. And what's before the board is a sketch plan for what is proposed is to transfer approximately 28,966 square feet of ground from what's indicated as Track 1. It used to be the site of the Continental Auto Parks, it's now owned by 13, 15 LLC, Holdings LLC, which is Mike Mardenley.
Who happens to be here. Do you have any questions of Mike?
And Track 2, which is the existing Mr. Storage facility. So, what is proposed is to transfer property from Track 1 in the amount of approximately 28,699 square feet to Track 2 for the creation of an additional larger parcel ground by which Mr. Gilmore, on behalf of Mr. Storage, would desire to construct an addition to the existing facility. The footprint of the addition is approximately 12,225 square feet. And with that, I want to go over, I'll go over the comments that are contained in Mr. Faulkner's letter. So, the board's aware, the existing facility is here, so this is the existing building, existing driveway access, the existing green area that's there, and the proposed building's directly behind it. Mr. Gilmore stated earlier that when you're driving down Eagle Road, this building is actually, the proposed addition is behind the existing building on the track adjacent to it, but we're proposing to subdivide it and add that parcel to the Mr. Storage parcel, and then add additional parking facilities to be used by the new facility that's proposed. With regard to the letter that we did, in fact, receive from your township engineer, item number one says that the plan indicates zoning relief may be required for impervious coverage, building coverage, and subdivision of existing non-conforming lots. Track 1 and Track 2 currently exceed the maximum impervious coverage. Track 1 will remain existing non-conforming for impervious coverage. Proposed Track 2 will be non-conforming for both impervious coverage and building coverage. And what the board should be aware of is, in the calculations for impervious coverage, we included the area that's in the cap, which is the area that's indicated by the red line internally. The actual, the actual area that is covered by green for Track 2, what's proposed, is actually 58.59%, if you include what will be grass. So, what's happened is, we've actually calculated it, since it's part of the cap as impervious, but when you see what's highlighted in green on the drawing in front of you, actually, there's only 58.59% of the ground that would be actually covered by pavement and by buildings. So, the ordinance actually says the maximum impervious coverage is 60%. By doing what we're proposing to do, even though the cap is there, which I know in previous application was considered impervious, we're actually below the threshold, the 60% threshold. If you include it, we're well above it, we're in the 90s, I think we're at like 94%. The also, the differences in the building coverage, the proposed building coverage on Track 2, once it would be transferred, would be approximately 33.58%. The code allows for 30%, so it would require a variance to allow the building coverage to exceed that of the 30% allowable under the code. What I do have for the board is, Mr. Gilmore's attorney did look at the ordinances.
I just handed that out.
Oh, you did hand it out?
Yeah.
So, he went over a list of, to address the comments that were made in comment one about variances and non-conformities and the like, there's a list that was prepared by Mr. Gilmore's attorney showing the relief that would be needed in response to item 1. Also, in item number 2, says the applicant has indicated that zoning relief may be required for man-made and natural steep and very steep slopes. It should be noted that building is prohibited at use within very steep slopes, and the access drive is only permitted by special exception. We are aware of it. We have a kind of a unique situation here, is that I know there's been a debate and have a potential over the years whether man-made slopes should count or shouldn't count, and I know there was one time, a draft ordinance several years ago, to eliminate man-made steep slopes when you're doing your calculations for disturbance purposes. In this particular case, the property at one time wasn't steep slope at all. The reason it's steep is when they built the cap over the Superfund site to protect it, to build the cap, the cap is what's creating the steep slopes. So, we're proposing to go to the zoning hearing board, and with the argument that we have an existing situation, that they are, in fact, man-made slopes, they were created in conjunction with the Superfund site, and the cap that was required when the EPA ultimately decided that this site needed to be mitigated. So, that's where those slopes are coming from. We do have a plan that highlights the areas of the steep slopes and very steep slopes. With the very steep slopes are indicated in a pinkish gloss hatching, and the steep slopes are indicated in a yellowish color. The difference is, under the ordinance, the area 15% to 25% slope is steep slope, and over 25% is very steep slope. The large majority of the very steep slope, we're not proposing to disturb at all, it's the slope that's adjacent to the existing building that's on the property. We are proposing to disturb areas of steep slope, as well as to disturb areas of very steep slope. We are aware of the comment that was made by Mr. Faulkner with regard to the very steep slope and the building prohibition, but it's our contention, because of the fact that this was, in fact, constructed as a cap to a Superfund site, it's actually, I mean, I mean, beyond man-made, because man-made, a lot of times, is just grading that was done in conjunction with some other building. This was done purposeful for environmental protection, and to go through with this project, similar to the first building that was constructed, we were going to need approval from Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, as well as the EPA. So, when we, when the first building was constructed, we actually had to submit all the information to the Environmental Protection Agency, as well as the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, as well as it went through the township, through the planning process, to get approval. And we're proposing to similarly do the same type of procedure to go through that. We are cognizant of the fact that we do need EPA approval because we're over, we're proposing to be constructed over Superfund site. One of the things that they had, the EPA had liked with regard to this facility was an unoccupied basic building, it's for storage facilities, and it doesn't generate a lot of traffic. You're not have a retail business where you've got traffic going in and out all the time. The next item that Mr. Faulkner has elaborated on is unclear if the indicated parking is adequate for the proposed use.
I have a traffic study.
Okay, well, based, based on the ordinance, it would require 37 parking spaces for this facility. Based on actuality, for a storage building, you need significantly less parking than that. We'd ask for relief for the building in the front, and we have parking on a similar ratio than what's already physically there in the front building.
What is the ratio on the front building?
The size of the building?
Parking spaces and the size of the building.
In the front, we had 11 spaces, there were 10 recommended by this same company, and it's very adequate for what we have, we don't have a parking problem at all. And he's recommending six in the back, and because the building is a little over half the size of the one in the back, so it's 11 in the front, we're going to put six in the back, and that's what's shown on the plan, and that's what is recommended by the Traffic and Planning Department, or.
Traffic Planning Design.
Traffic and Planning Design Company.
Thank you. The next item in the latter was, it's unclear if loading or unloading areas are warranted. We're proposing an area for truck parking, which would be a single unit truck, which is similar to a U-Haul type facility, because that's, that's the kind of vehicles that come to these places to unload, so it's similar to the parking that's available now for unloading purposes, and that's what's been shown on the drawing.
We have one space for a truck parking in this new design.
Right.
And we have one in the front, and that's been very adequate. We have not had any problems with truck parking.
That strictly for loading and unloading?
Yes.
The next item was in the.
Let me explain that just for a second. We're not going to have an office in the back, so in other words, the people will use the office in the front, the buildings are connected, but they will load in the back, so they'll go down to the light and take a left, and then go on Hillcrest, and then take a, go back up that road, and then from the back for loading. But we won't have to have another office.
The next comment is comment number five, in the Light Industrial District, the front yard landscape stripped 20 feet, and with plan and landscape subject to the approval of the Shade Tree Commission is required. Both front yards are existing, a front yard for Track 2 has already been developed and already gone to the Shade Tree Commission with regard to the plannings. The other frontage is the frontage, the existing property that remain on Mr. Mardenley's property, there's an existing building on the property, there's nothing proposed on that property right now. So, we are cognizant of the landscape requirements. I believe the existing Track 2 does meet that requirement, we're not changing the street frontage, it's exactly the same as currently exists, and it's been landscaped and also modeled after Eagle Road landscape enhancement. So, if you've driven out there, you've seen, the facility does have the amenities that are typical along there, particularly across the street with the YMCA, so it's the same type of landscaping that was captured there. But that's what's, right now, we feel that's, I mean, in the ordinance, I don't disagree, that's what it says, we're intending to leave the front entrance exactly the way it is. The next one is item 6, which says the plan does not address the requirements for open space. I believe in the ordinance, it does require 30% of the ground in Light Industrial we devoted to open space. The concern that, that we have, when I discussed it with my client, it's a Superfund site. So, to provide open space, our question was, for who? And we don't want people using the Superfund site for open space or passive recreation, we don't want them on the property. They should be, I mean, we're basically trying to maintain the cap that's out there and the amenities to that, but I know that Mr. Gilmore is willing to talk to the township with regard to that, because that was an issue when the original building was built. So, we are aware of the regulation, the ordinance, and Mr. Gilmore will be willing to.
Yes.
Discuss it with the township with regard to that.
In regards to that, if I'm not mistaken, that property is part of the rail trail that is going all the way from Upper Darby out to Radnor Township. And that's why we're looking for the 15-foot right-of-way, so that as this develops, it will be known and become, and be able to do the connection that needs to be made.
Well, there's a, I talked to Chuck about that, because I wasn't sure what he was referring to, but on the plan, there's a 15-foot, there's an existing. Right-of-way that extends right, right here.
Mm-hmm.
Already goes through, and we would be happy to extend that through our property.
And we would like to have that as part of the, as part of the.
Yes, it's shown, it's right, it's shown here. Stops, and he asked to have it extended.
Exactly.
That's not a problem, we have no problem.
I'm doing that. That was item number 10 on his list. Number seven, a traffic impact study is required as part of the study, an explanation of how the users of these facilities will be directed to the proper location, given the two entrances should be provided. I know that Mr. Gilmore is engaged, traffic planning design. I don't, since I haven't seen the document, I don't know if it addresses the second part of the, the question.
It, it addresses the, the number of trips, and has a calculation of the traffic effect on Eagle Road, and I disagree with his outcome, because I think he's, you know, I explained this at the last meeting we had, I believe, but this is an indoor facility, so we have almost no commercial customers. On our other facilities that we own in the Philadelphia area, we have outside storage, so we have a lot of contractors. And the contractors come in in the morning, leave in the afternoon, they get their tools, and they're in and out all the time, so it's a much higher trip generation. Well, he didn't, he doesn't take that into account, because he has to go to the records that he has from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So, his result is, though, that Eagle Road is 22,725 vehicles a day, and we're going to be adding 60, which is .26, it's a one-quarter of 1% is what our add is to the traffic. But the people that are going in the back to Hillcrest are turning at the light, and then they go back into the industrial park, so they're not really affecting the traffic to any extent. Like with before, where we had a new entrance with other people turning in and out of Eagle Road, I don't think this will have any effect on that, and the number of people we'll have is minimal in the back.
I think that addresses the impact, but I think one of the questions that he raised in his, in his comment, and we'll do that, said as part of the study, an explanation of how the users of the facility are going to get to each facility, how they're going to physically get there, is what, what I believe he's, he's asking for.
If you're a new customer, there's two choices, you could go to the existing front office, or all the people that check in and their contracts are done on an iPad, so the manager has an iPad, so he could either meet them at the office, or meet them in the back and show them their unit, check them in on the iPad in the back, and then as they come to load and unload, they wouldn't need to come to the office in the front anymore, they would go directly to the back. And most people don't, I mean, you know, the average customer is putting things away, they don't come in all the time, so, you know, they'll put it away, and then they come back two months later and remove it, or visit it once or twice, but they're not in and out all the time, we don't see that. But that's how it would operate.
The next, next item is number eight, the plan should be reviewed by the township fire code official for suitability of emergency vehicle or access maneuverability. That's fine, absolutely agree that we would need to do that.
I have not done that, but I will meet with the fire marshal.
Number nine was, should the plan proceed to preliminary final? The following should be considered, and approved Pennsylvania sewage facilities planning modular exemption will be required, I, I agree. Approval of the Environmental Protection Agency should be obtained, that's absolutely a must.
As I mentioned, I've discussed that with both members, the EPA and the PADEP, they have no objection, but they want to see all this documentation and your recommendations. And then after that, they'll issue a letter of some kind.
The, the next portion of it was, the existing storm drainage sanitary sewer and public water supply lines need to be indicated, absolutely, that's not a problem. Indicate the steep and very steep slopes and the extent they will be disturbed, they have been indicated on the drawings that I do have now. They weren't probably on the plans that Mr. Faulkner was, had available for him to review. Number 10, we already discussed, we're willing to extend the, the access easement. Number 11, with regard to whether it's, it's going to be a new building or an addition, theoretically, it's an addition, because we're leaving the office exactly where it's at now, and it's going to be incorporated as part of the overall system.
Are there going to be any restroom facilities in that building, or will they stay in the original building?
I don't know what the requirements are, we'll have to meet the International Building Code, so I don't really know.
The, the buildings are physically connected, right?
That is correct, they are physically connected, yes.
Didn't you tell me this afternoon, it was on three floors, is that what you were doing, Lou?
It's exactly the same number of floors we have now.
But you're connecting them on each floor?
On each floor.
Yeah.
The connection will.
There's going to be hallway to connect them.
All the way out, so the building will be connected on all floors.
Gotcha.
Why the space between the two buildings then?
Pardon?
Why the space between the two buildings?
Oh, the space, there's a roof, okay, our roof in the front building drains to the back, and all the downspouts come to the back, so we have a large pipe in there that Jamie designed to take all that water out. So, I, connecting the two buildings, we'd like to just push the two buildings together, but it's almost impossible. And then, there's a problem of drain, the roof gets low there, and the other roof has to be a little bit higher to drain it the same way that that one drains. So, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to push them together. That's the only reason it's like that. Otherwise, they would be connected, but because of the roof and the drainage, it doesn't work.
There are the comments. I went to visit the site, and I noticed, and I wasn't sure, but is there a retention pond along the side of the, the building where the, on that side? Over here, on the other side, right there?
Yes.
Is that a retention pond?
That's the retention basin that was constructed by the EPA in conjunction with mitigation for the overall cap and the construction.
And would the additional impervious surface for the roof?
Well, there's, there, this is, there's, here's where the debate comes.
Okay.
There is a letter that we have from EPA saying that the detention basin is adequate and sized to handle all the stormwater runoff from this whole entire area. And I've had the letter, and I've submitted it to the township on numerous occasions. The township, I'll be nice, doesn't necessarily agree with the letter that the EPA has written. And when we, when we constructed the building in the front, I have two stormwater management systems, there's one that's a completely enclosed underground culvert, box culvert, that is completely sealed, because I'm not allowed to infiltrate stormwater over the cap, and it ultimately discharges into a storm source system that runs underneath the parking lot at the YMCA, and ends up discharging in the nailer's run. But that was designed to retain flow in accordance with that. In addition to that, on the southerly side of the building, there's a rain garden. The rain garden also provides stormwater detention, and it also provides what the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection was requiring, is water quality control. So, what Mr. Gilmore was referring to.
You have another one, too, there's two rain gardens.
Yeah, there's, right, there's another one in the front, there's another one in the front parking area. And what happens is, the roof drains in the back, end up discharging to this rain garden, the rain garden then discharges to a storm source system, then there's another rain garden, you're right, there's another rain garden in the front, it's a real simple system, drains into that, and then it ultimately drains into the, the box culvert, and then discharges off the site. So, I'm presuming, I'm still going to have to, I would love to just say that we have the letter from the EPA, and I'm fine and dandy, but I don't know if Mr. Faulkner's going to agree. So, I'm presuming I'm going to have to do some more stormwater management. Unless he tells me, I'm okay, which I'm fine with.
We already went down this road.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure I understand why we can't go into that existing basin with this new project, for sure, because it never has more than about two inches of water in it. We're part of the industrial park that it was made for.
If you want to, we can revisit that if you want to.
Okay, I want to, I definitely want to. Now, that has not been designed, we're not that far, but we have to get there very soon.
That would also require EPA. Other questions? Any other questions over here?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Bob?
Just one more question. The proposed access drive, that's part of your project also?
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to serve Track 1, ultimately allow them to have access onto, currently, there's an existing access driveway off of Hillcrest. Unfortunately, I was here before, when Lob's Lumber was there, I did a subdivision for Lob's Lumber and Mr. Gans' property in the back, and there used to be an access right along the southerly side of Lob's Lumber where the railroad tracks were, and it was a drainage ditch there. When this Superfund site was created, Lob's Lumber went away, they took the access drive out, took all the tracks out, and rerouted the access point to the additional facilities that are to the west of this facility. So, it would allow their access to the, the property that they currently have access to now, they, they can physically drive out that driveway and get out on to Hillcrest, so it's to maintain their access.
Is that the road you're talking about, the 20-foot wide one?
Yes.
Yeah, he was talking about. Yes, that easement, or Mike Mardenley's customer.
You're just going to attach it into the other road?
Yeah, it, yeah, this, this driveway, it's physically constructed now, and if you're out there, most of the area, there's still two buildings right adjacent to where the tracks were, that there's a bituminous driveway that's out there, and also, a lot of this property is basically, has modified material that's so tight that it's a, basically.
So, basically, what, what I'm getting at is, that's going to be the only access road to that side of the site?
No, that's currently the access, how they get back there, this property actually has another acc, or did, it had a driveway that came off of Lawrence Road, right now, it's been fenced off, but this property had another access off of Lawrence Road besides the driveway access that's proposed.
And in the back, it has a back access. Is that what you mean? Okay. Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yeah. He has three accesses.
Thank you.
Honey, really, too. You just, too, they had, you said that other one was...
Well, I think, Mike, you can explain this, but...
There's three access roads. There's one...
I'm sorry, guys. Ooh, I talked really loud. If, everybody, we're being filmed, so if everybody can make sure to use the microphones, that'd be great. Thanks.
This is the driveway you have now. Here's the back one.
Also, here's Hillcrest, so this first driveway comes in.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
One of us listened to you.
I show pictures.
All right. And obviously, so the board knows, this is Michael Mardenley.
Hi. Give a second here. I think I can clarify some of the stuff. Here's the one access road. Here's the second access road, here. And there's the second one off of Lawrence. Access. And there's another access road that comes down from Lawrence Road at 1375 and goes behind Jerry Gray's Autobody and comes back in. That's the third access road. Um, Kanz, K-N-Z-E, plumbing is up there. The alley for the apartments is up there. It comes in off of Lawrence. There is three access roads. It's up here. So that's the original cab.
Thank you.
Use your old ticket tonight.
Does that, do you understand what he said?
I saw it.
Good, that's good. Thanks.
How many people that would probably use this during the day? Do you have enough parking?
Well, we have more than enough parking. I actually did a study of that. By the way, while we're taking this one half second, I do have a letter from Dan Siegel that I'd like to put in that says that he's reviewed all the plans and, what does he say? And has no objection to the project, meaningful or not. That's what he said. He actually did a study because I don't agree with the planning department, but this might give you an idea.
You're talking about traffic planning and design?
Traffic planning.
Is that correct?
Sorry. I do agree. I do agree with everything. Sorry. The, okay, we did a study in July, which we were closed for one day, and we came up with the fact that we had 12 people a day, 12.16 tenants came in in July on a daily basis. Is that what you need to know?
Yeah.
I have all the records of that.
In other words, this would be your trip generation data?
Well, yes, but contrary to a, I mean, I think empirical data is really important, and I, we ran, I had that. Here's the, we actually logged, took everybody that logged in in July. We have a computer system when they log in, so we counted all the people that came in for July, so we have an empirical study of what's really happening. So we don't, we don't need even the six or 11 parking places. If you go by there, you're not going to see them fall.
Okay.
So it was, I mean, actually, it's, it's fine the way it is. It's not a problem.
Lou, what were the hours of operation again?
Oh, Michael, what exactly, now, I'm not sure.
It's Monday through Friday from 7:00.
The 12.6 trips was over 9 to 7 period or on a weekend?
Well, he counts a trip as in and out. So we had 12 people going in, so it's really, we have 24 people. Trip generation.
That, that was during a weekday?
That was in the average of the month, all month of July.
The average of the month, I got you.
Could I just have some clarification on the access drive you said, behind the apartments? What apartments are we talking about?
The townhouses that are on Lawrence Road.
Okay. So we're talking about their private alley being used as a access from the site?
It's not a private, the private alley is not being used. It's accessed through an easement up there, and then it enters onto 1000 North Eagle.
Okay, so it's coming out prior to getting to those townhouses?
The light industrial driveway going out.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we weren't using...
They also use it to go into the driveway and add it towards Jehovah's Witness.
Okay, so we're not using the private alley behind them? Good.
It really gets used.
Would we be doing an easement for that, since that isn't part of the site?
Well, we have nothing to do with that.
Okay, okay. We're just talking about...
Our people coming off of Hillcrest.
Out of, okay, so we're just talking out of the other industrial site, not coming out of your site.
Of track A, yeah.
But will remain of track number one? Well, that's their easements, and that is separate from you all.
Yes, completely.
They're just showing that there's adequate egress and entry from track one, correct? You obviously are going to need to go to zoning in order to get the rest of the pieces of the pie done.
That is absolutely correct.
When you came to us the last time, and many of us were on the board already, but a couple of us weren't at the time of the last time, we were in favor of this particular project for a variety of reasons, but one of them was because we have a superfund site that, without damaging the superfund site, had a, an adaptive reuse that was rather spectacular and brought in additional income for the township. It appears to me that barring any problems with Mr. Faulkner or with the EPA or with the state EPA, and figuring out how to get the stormwater wherever Mr. Faulkner needs to have it go, and considering that we're going to get our 15 feet going along the side here so that as the paths, as a rails, trails-type things are going to be able to continue, I see this as a similar kind of project to your first one. It's beneficial to the community, it's beneficial to the township, and I don't see it as a negative. That's my personal opinion, and I'm more than welcome, and I'm putting it out on the airwaves.
We appreciate that. Is it possible to, do you all from this meeting possibly tentative approval?
We can give you a tentative approval.
Do you have something to go to the zoning board?
Yeah, but you guys still have to go before the zoning board.
Pardon? Yeah, we, we're aware we have to go to the zoning board.
Oh, yeah.
And once you're done with...
I gave you the list of the...
And then, and then, once you come back from them, if they approve, we cannot step on their toes, but if they approve what you're looking for. We can tentatively say, yeah, we approve this, but you're going to have to come back to us anyway after the zoning board.
Oh, yes. No, we understand that. But I wanted to be here to make sure there weren't any glitches before we go to the zoning board and then have to go back and forth. What are your opinions and ideas, you know, from...
I think you were very, very thorough. I think you did a good job. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
No, I'm good.
Anybody in the audience?
I don't know of anybody in the audience. I know there's a young lady behind me. If she has any questions or anything, you'd like to say anything. Yes.
Can you come up to the podium?
And speak into the microphone.
Speak into the mic? Sorry.
I've been down there 39 years. I own Direct Paint Collision, Bob and Joe's Towing, and I own the superfund site. I've been there through all the reclamation and the remediation. The upper portions were built to be built upon. That's why they're different heights. And we questioned Army Corps of Engineers when they did this, and the soil they put up there was to have low impact, have low, on the ground up there. To me, is for storage. I rented out, also rent part of the bottom two acres out. This is the best use of land that we could imagine that would bring income into the township. Low traffic impact, not just because I'm selling it to them, that's a good, great thing, too. But if he wasn't going to do it, I was going to do it. And I have EPA comfort letters, I have Act Two from the DEP, which transfers to Mr. Gilmore's property. So I spent three years over the paperwork with the government entities to get this. And I think it's the best thing back there, that, for use of the site, that upper site. I can't do much with the lower site, I can only use it for parking because the cap is only 18 inches there. It's, what, three and a half feet up there?
Oh, five.
It's five feet. And with Lou developing a new elevator pit that doesn't go into the ground, it's a lot easier that we don't have any cutting into the cap at all.
Right, not going to touch the cap.
So I really do recommend this. It would be the best thing for the township. I'm like, I'm back there every day, I see the impacts.
We're dealing with a procedure here, and the procedure is that, is, it is procedural, but you have, I think, the tentative support of this board at this point in time based upon the fact that you follow through with everything else. When you come back to see us again, okay, we can give you the clear cut. We can't do that without having the zoning boards.
No, we understand that.
That's the only thing that we need to have done.
Thank you.
Did we get some kind of a letter to the zoning board that you tentatively approved from what you've seen?
We can, depending on the outcome of this evening, I'm sure that we could do some sort of a memo, kind of outlining the discussion that we had this evening and what our initial feelings are with the sketch plan.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Yeah, that can be done.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore.
I don't think we need to. I think we're, all we're going to have to do here is get the memo together that we need. Am I correct?
If you want to do a motion, what, on what, whether you are recommending approval of the sketch plan, or in support, thank you, of the sketch plan to the zoning board, then I think that might be appropriate.
I'll make that motion, that we recommend the approval of the sketch plan as it was presented to us tonight with the, all of the additions and corrections that are, we have agreed to tonight, including number one through 11 on the Panoni letter to Mr. Gilmore, as well as, and I know it's already in here, but I'm just, because it's my pet peeve, I just want to make sure that our 15-foot access easement is going to be there. If I've left anything out to you, and...
Second that.
Here we go. The motion, we have a second, please call the roll. Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdomondo?
Yes.
Mr. Galman?
Yes.
Mr. Pointe?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, and we will see you back here again.
We're going to get back as soon as we can.
Sounds like a plan.